It's seven PM and August the 20th. And the meeting is just getting started. So, call to order and roll call.
Mr. Hesse.
Here.
Mr. Seaman. Mr. Koiner.
Yeah.
Mr. Terrapanny is out. Mr. Frame.
Here.
Mr. Stavopoulos.
Here.
Mr. Vessi.
Here.
Ms. McCumber.
Here.
Okay, thank you. And next we'll have approval minutes from July 16th, 2018.
I make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Every second?
Second.
Ms. McCumber.
Motion to approve.
Oh, motion to approve.
No, we did that, so we just want to say yes or no. Yes.
Mr. Vessi?
Yes.
Mr. Stavopoulos?
Yes.
Mr. Frame?
Yes.
Mr. Koiner?
Yes.
Mr. Hesse?
Yes.
Thank you. Next we have a quasi judicial announcement and swearing in of speakers. Do we have any speakers tonight?
Uh, okay. Sure, just for the only applicant tonight, uh, we do have a quorum, but we are one short, so it's not a full board. So if the applicant wishes to defer tonight, they may. Okay, sorry, sorry. Uh, there's, there is a quorum of the board tonight, but there is less than the full board, so if the applicant wishes to defer, they may. Okay, great. So I will swear you in now. Uh, do you swear affirm the testimony about to give tonight is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So sworn. This is a quasi judicial proceeding where the planning and zoning board acts in a quasi judicial rather than a legislative capacity. At a quasi judicial hearing, it is not the board's function to make law, but rather to apply law that is already most established. In a quasi judicial hearing, the board is required by law to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at the hearing and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria contained in the Code of Ordances in order to make a legal decision regarding the application before it. The board may only consider evidence at this hearing that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant to the issues. If the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has met the criteria established in the Code of Ordances, then the board is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has failed to meet the criteria established in the Code of Ordances, then the board is required by law to find against the applicant. Are there any members of the board tonight wishing to disclose any ex parte communication or conflicts of interest? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, next on our list is application number eighteen dash sixty-nine rezoning of approximately point six eight acres located at Lucille Drive, including lots four, five, and six Ferguson Cedar Bluffs addition from R-100 Single Family Residential District to R-100A Single, Single Family Residential District. Thank you.
Thank you. Pat McNeese, Principal Planner. This is a request for rezoning for approximately zero point six eight acres of real property located on the corner of Lucille Drive and West Bay Shore Drive from R-100 to R-100A, both titled Single Family Residential. The applicant is Anita Protos. The future land use designation for this parcel is residential low. The surrounding area is, uh, um, consists of R-100 properties adjacent, R-100 and R-100A properties in the vicinity, and all single family residential, um, uh, development or vacant, uh, platted for single family. Um, basically, um, the, the applicant wishes to, um, this is all one parcel at, at this time, the applicant wishes to split the parcel back into its three original lots platted in the nineteen fifty-seven plat, and, uh, the applicant has stated, uh, that she wishes to sell those for the development of detached single family homes. With respect to your review criteria, the R-100A Single Family District permits the, um, maximum densities and densities and uses that are consistent with the residential low future land use category, and it is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Um, basically, uh, the allowable uses for R-100 and R-100A match, they're exactly the same. Uh, so, um, the available uses for this property are appropriate based on that. Uh, with respect to item three, the city has planned for and maintains sufficient facilities for this subdivision for buildout of single family homes in this area. Uh, so this will promote the orderly development of, uh, the orderly and efficient development of this residential area, um, without significant cost to the city. Uh, similarly with item four, um, the roadways and utilities are already in place, and again, this will not unduly impact city facilities. Uh, the technical review committee reviewed this application on June twenty-eighth, twenty eighteen. They recommended that it be scheduled for public hearing. Uh, this application was properly noticed, and we received no responses to, to the notice. Staff recommends approval of this rezoning from R-100 Single Family Residential to R-100A Single Family Residential District. Do you have any questions?
I do. How, what's the lot size? Not this point six, but how long is the lot? How wide is it?
The current lots?
This one particular one?
Um.
There's just one on there, right?
This is one parcel that is a combination of a previous three lots.
So is it, does it still have three lots on it, or is it one lot?
It is currently one lot.
Okay.
What I can do is look that up. The applicant may be able to answer that, but it is in her application.
Okay.
And she may be able to do that, and I'll look through the file and confirm.
Anyone else have some questions?
I have a question. Unless I've missed it, it doesn't appear that there's a site plan of the proposed lot sizes of how that initial parcel or the one parcel is going to be divided into the three parcels and how that might reflect against its neighbors. And I, I just might not have been through the package yet.
Yeah, the applicant's narrative is very thorough. I didn't really repeat it in the staff report. Um, again, the applicant can answer that, but, um, under their compliance with standards, item two, um, there is an estimated, uh, size for each of the, each of the lots. Lot four is estimated at ten thousand four hundred and eighty square feet, lot five at ninety, nine thousand five hundred and three square feet, and lot six at nine thousand five hundred and ninety-four square feet.
I see that now, thank you.
Yeah, okay. And if you add those three together, that would probably give you the total area. Um, but if, we can look up those total dimensions for you.
Okay, I'm sure the applicant has some of that. Anyone else have any questions?
I have another question. If I may. So the review by, I believe, your office, number one, states, "The amendment is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the city's Tarpon Springs Comprehensive Plan." That being said, on the first page, the background page, if I may, the countrywide land use designation is residential low medium, RLM, and the city's future land use designation is residential low, RL. The immediate and extended surrounding areas located in the area is RL low. I'm a little bit confused how it says that it's consistent with the goals and the objectives, but when in fact, the stated background is that the purpose or the future, and I'll read it again, "The city's future land use designation is residential low."
Yes.
How do those two things meet?
Residential low is up to five units per acre, and this plat, this area of developed single family complies with that density. That's zero to five units per acre is the, um, allow, is basically the density for residential low, and for the countywide residential low medium in this area complies with, with that density.
So it's my understanding of low that's off a little bit here. Low does not mean one or two, low means zero to ten, or zero to five?
Zero to five per acre. Yeah. It's not, maybe not as low as you think. It's not as low as, say, something like agricultural, which would be something like one per acre. So, yeah.
Any other questions? At this time, I'd like to invite the applicant to speak, please. State your name and address.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Cindy Terrapanny at twenty-two North Spring Boulevard. I represent Ms. Protos, who is the applicant. Um, I'm passing out, I think this will answer a bunch of your questions, and then I'll have a few more comments. Um, the plat called Ferguson Cedar Bluffs Edition was platted in nineteen fifty-eight, and a copy of that is what I'm passing out to you today. Uh, so there is, as, um, uh, Ms. McNeese stated, it is under one parcel ID, but there are three platted lots. So when everyone gets one, I'll walk you through exactly how they're laid out. Um, if you look at, um, let's first start with this, the lots one, two, and three on the east side of Bay Shore. Lots two and three are where Mrs. Protos' existing home is. They're not included in this application. Lot one at the corner, uh, is also not part of this application. It, uh, is a single lot of record, and the city has already given a, a nonconforming lot of record, so that that could be built on separately as a platted lot. The three lots on the west side, lots four, five, and six, that front on West Bay Shore or Lucille, whatever street we're going to call it today, those are the three lots that are subject to this application. Um, lot four, which is the southernmost lot, is ten thousand four hundred and eighty square feet. Lot five, the middle one, is ninety-five hundred square feet, and lot six is ninety-five hundred square feet also. Uh, also to answer Ms., the chairman's, um, questions, um, starting from the north with lot six, it's a hundred and six feet deep. Lot five is a hundred and twenty-one feet deep, and lot four is a hundred and thirty-seven feet deep. You can see, obviously, by the geometry, they get a little larger. Um, lots four and five are about seventy-eight feet of frontage on the road. Um, lot six is a little tricky because it's got the curve, but it's got sixty-three feet on what I call the straightaway, and another, uh, fifty or so on the curve, so however you want to figure that out. So lot four clearly meets the R-100, um, but the other two do not, but they're only off by less than five percent. And they were platted in nineteen fifty-eight. Uh, Mrs. Protos and her husband purchased them in nineteen eighty-five, um, to control what was happening around them, obviously, and also, um, for, um, you know, for their retirement and for, um, you know, to, to, uh, increase their, uh, retirement ability. And now that, um, she does not intend to build on any of the others herself, where she wants to, the opportunity to sell each of them off as a platted lot and a buildable lot. The art difference between the, as your staff has said in your staff report, the only difference between, um, R-100 and R-100A, there's two differences, actually. One is the lot size. In R-100, which we are today, it's ten thousand square feet, and R-100A, it's seven thousand square feet. So each lot would clearly meet that and be greatly over that, obviously. The other difference is to the rear yard setback. In R-100, it's thirty-five feet, thirty feet, and in R-100A, it's twenty-five feet. The front setbacks, the side setbacks, and the height are all exactly the same in the districts, and as Ms. McNeese has said, and in her staff report, the uses are exactly the same. So we're not doing this to try and get an ALF or anything else. We're simply doing it to build three single family homes. Additionally, I'll call your attention in your staff report, the very last map in your staff report, um, shows the R-100 area, um, and it's one of the yellow maps, it's the very last map. Um, but in your staff report, it shows the R-100A area to the south, the, the large area, which is one lot off our property, Ms. Protos' property, to the south, is the Bay Shore Heights. And that was approved in nineteen, excuse me, two thousand four or five, I believe, no, more recently, two thousand fourteen, excuse me, um, for a similar situation. There were platted lots, obviously. They didn't all meet the R-100, um, so they, uh, achieved a rezoning, and the, and the city commission approved that to R-100A. They combined lots, uh, a little differently, and did, as you probably have been out there and seen it, um, there's a little different road configuration, but anyway, the way that they were able to achieve that and to redevelop that site, um, from a vacant piece of property into buildable lots in some very, a very nice neighborhood, was to do the R-100A rezoning. So we're merely asking for the same, um, request as the Bay Shore Heights, um, and it exists right in the immediate neighborhood. Um, it's clearly consistent with the comp plan, as, as your staff has pointed out. It's consistent with the criteria for rezoning, same, uh, exact uses, all the dimensional requirements save for the rear setback are the same. And finally, we just ask that, that we get the fair treatment to the property, you know, they bought them as three platted, well, six platted lots originally, the three that we're talking about today, they bought them as three platted lots. Just want the ability to develop and sell them as three individual lots, um, same as what they, uh, what they thought they had when they purchased them. Between the time they purchased them, the city's rules on nonconforming lots changed, and therefore that's why we're here today. So I, um, that's all I really had to say about it. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Anyone have any questions? No? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Anyone else like to speak? Please state your name and address.
My name is Harry Andropoulos. My address is nine oh five and nine oh seven Bay Shore Drive. Uh, good evening, Board. Uh, I'm the person who's most affected by this property, because my property runs the entire length of where all those lots are across the street. I do not object to the rezoning of it. The reason I'm here is I have, my concerns are about drainage. They put a culvert underneath the street that they put in there when they put the Bay Shore Heights subdivision in. That doesn't drain to anywhere. It drains from essentially on Mrs. Protos' side to my side of the property. Uh, it does, it's not connected to their drainage system, it's a, it's a stupid thing to do, but Swift Mud said that they were supposed to put it in there so that they didn't affect, the road didn't affect the natural drainage of the area. Fine, it's dumb, but, anyway, the point being, that was fine when it was all dirt on both sides of the property. So it was an all pervious surface, so the water essentially went in the ground, so it really was kind of a moot point. We do get water in that culvert, but it doesn't really cause much of a problem. The problem that I have is, and I want to once again stress, I don't object to the rezoning, is that the, the houses that they put in there need to be required to drain onto the street and go into their drainage system, not all drained down into that culvert and drained into my property, which is the low side of it. Because we never have any water problems now, but we will if you cover with impervious surface seventy percent of the surface area there. You're going to put five houses essentially across the street from us. Mrs. Protos only has four of those lots, but there's another lot on the end down there. So what I ask is that the city require whoever builds there, that they drain their water onto the street into that's collection system, and hopefully close that culvert, which is no longer serves the purpose it was put there for. And that's really the reason that I'm here.
Does anyone have any question? I do. Um, it looks like there, the road, if, when I'm looking at different, like this paper compared to the overhead paper, I mean, I, obviously, there's a road that goes across that property, I guess, between y'all's two properties?
The Bay Shore Heights people put that road in.
Okay, but I can't, I can't see it on this one because of the trees.
Would, would that be all right if I went over and showed you?
Why not?
Sure.
Yeah, the, the property appraisers are, it's not up to date, so there's no.
Yeah, there's, there's.
There's now a road that, right on this white line.
Okay.
That connects what was old Bay Shore.
All right, so what they have here then?
Exactly.
Okay.
Now, as a matter of fact, that culvert is right there in that curb.
Hmm, right there.
Yeah, it's actually in the, in the dirt, though, it's not on the street. And then it goes across, it's a box culvert, and it goes across, and there's another grate on this side that is on my. Grates are level to each other. What happened is the water theoretically was supposed to spill into the.
And just magically disappear?
Yeah, so what I did was, when they put it in originally, uh, but it did originally, I asked the city to drill some holes in it.
In the bottom of that culvert so that the water wouldn't sit in there and fill with mosquitoes. They did drill a couple of holes, and over time, it does drain into the, the ground. The problem is that it's, there's really no water flowing in that area anywhere, so the water that goes in that culvert essentially falls through the grates in the rainstorms. But now, if you drain this area, it drains to that point, and, uh, that will be water from roofs, driveways, decks, pools, and, you know, and all of our, all the regular R-100 lots are not very big anyway. So when you put decent sized houses, which is what's going to happen, and that's fine with me, uh, you have to just account for the water. And their system is more than adequate to take the water from three or four additional houses into their system. And the road is set up, oh, sorry, so if you drain to the road, it, it essentially won't cost them anything to do it, to, to do that, so, and not create any problems. As far as closing the culvert on the city's part, it's a little bit of cement.
Do you have flooding there now because of it?
No, we don't get flooding now.
Okay. Anyone else?
Uh, um, me, please. I, I forgot your name, forgive me.
Uh, Harry Andropoulos.
Harry Andropoulos, thank you so much for coming and chatting with us tonight, because I think you bring up a great point, which is that, um, development is good, but responsible development is even better. Now, Harry, you brought up a very critical point about the threat of flooding. Let's cut to brass tacks. What happens if those three houses are built, and it doesn't drain to the street, or it doesn't connect, or that culvert isn't filled in? We don't have the power to go, okay, we're going to approve that, but we're only going to prove it if we get X, Y, and Z, and you're hoping that in the future, and I don't know how lucky you are, but I'm not that lucky, that, that the worst case scenario happens sometimes.
Well, my, my property is the lowest, where that culvert comes across, it's the lowest point in that entire area. So if water floods down in that culvert from the houses that are built there, uh, it will make a flood in my yard, and there's nowhere for it to go. So it'll essentially pond up in my yard. Um, like I said, I, I never, didn't expect there to be houses across the street, and that's fine, and I, like I told you, I, I don't care if it's R, R-100A or not. I just want the city to account for that culvert and drain onto the street with the houses, like pretty much everybody else who's required to do in Tarpon when they build a house. You're supposed to drain onto the streets. You know, you can't drain onto your neighbors, and you can't drain, I mean, you're supposed to be, that's what the rules are when you build out. I've built enough houses in Tarpon to know that I had to grade them so they go to the street, and that's all I want, uh, that's all I'm asking, is that be put in the record, and, I mean, I'll, I mean, I hate to show up at every hearing for this and just state my little piece, but, you know, I mean, I have to just protect myself really against it. I mean, you know, like I said, I'm not opposed to the, them building the houses over there and that, like I said, R-100A zoning.
I do have a question. Can you point out the location of all that, the issue, where it's going on, on this?
I, I did for the gentleman, please. So if you look at this one.
I didn't have the opportunity. Kind of circle of where they are. So here is on either side of the road, right here. Yeah, the road's in there now, okay? And the road all drains into their system.
Who, who's, what's their system?
The Bay Shore Drive, uh, Bay Shore Heights subdivision.
Except that, that, forgive me, and I'm not in city planning or such, is that it can't handle anymore. It was only designed to handle theirs. So I, I'm going to just go out on a limb here, is that you don't, we don't get to just add more to it, because their system was designed to handle their stuff.
But it does handle all the water on that street. All the water on Bay Shore drains into their system.
So you're such a pleasant person, it would be really uncomfortable to see you again in three or four years, and you're pulling your hair out, and it's not draining correctly.
That's not going to happen. I mean, not a threat, but you don't understand what I'm saying. Yeah, so, I mean, the culvert, our whole culvert idea was done, I'm sorry.
Any more questions for him?
Not, not for our guests, but perhaps a question for our city planner.
So do we have any other guests that would like to speak? Anita?
Good evening, Anita Protos, nine oh one Bay Shore. If I start coughing, you have to excuse me, I've had open heart surgery, and if I talk too much, I start coughing. The water will go down the road further down. Anyone who builds there is going to have to fill in some of it because of the way they put the sidewalks in. And that's, falls back on the city, not us as property owners. And they closed that one culvert where nothing will drain out, and we came, kept, I kept coming back to the city, telling them they had to check the engineering, and was assured that it would work. I don't have flood insurance, because if my house floods, Harry floods, all of Tarpon's going to flood, even though we're close to the water. And, uh, the houses in the area there hasn't flooded. And, uh, what we have now is a motel for coyotes. And, uh, people, you know, I'm sorry we ever developed all that acreage back there, the city let, hoping it would stay woods, but as life goes on, we know that's not going to happen. And I just want to get my property situated like the other lots, and maybe I'll sell them, maybe I won't. I don't know what's going to happen. But I wanted to come back to the planning and zoning, because when I was mayor, uh, I left it alone, because I didn't want controversy, because it was me as mayor, and, and fight the zoning at that time. I felt it was best just to let it go and, and see what happens. But then the development came in, and everything's changed there. Everything has. And, uh, like I said, none of us have flooded, none of the new homes have flooded. Uh, it ponds, Harry's the lowest point, but whoever builds there is going to have to do some, a little bit of fill in there. All homes do in Florida. And then it just percolates, and it goes back into the ground, so you'll know that.
Thank you. Any questions for Anita? No. All right, I'd like to close this to the public, and, oh, I'm sorry.
The applicant has the opportunity to rebut.
Yeah, I'll be very brief. Again, Cindy Terrapanny for Mrs. Protos, the applicant. Um, the problem with the culvert is not Mrs. Protos' issue. The problem with the culvert, if there's a code enforcement violation, or if it needs to be, that needs to be handled separately with all due respect. However, the city requires these three lots to be graded, if they grade them to the street, that's required, then that's what, you know, the developer will do. But I just want to kind of separate that issue, that, that culvert issue is something that was created by those lots. It may or may not create a problem in the future, but it's really not. It may or may not create a problem in the future, but it's really not in our control, so I just want to make that perfectly clear. Again, we just asked for the ability to use three platted lots. Um, the owners bought them in reliance that they were three platted, buildable lots, and that's all they want to do is to be able to, the opportunity, if she decides to sell them, to have one house on each lot. Again, I'm happy to answer any questions that, that you might have.
I have a question for you, Mrs. Terrapini. You said you represent, uh, Mrs. Protas, but.
Yes.
What do you, I mean, what do you do?
I'm an urban planner, a land use planner.
Okay.
I'm just helping her get, do the rezoning application. I filled out the application. We came together to the TRC, um, and then came to the hearing tonight, and then I will go to the city council meeting for, along with her.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Anyone else would like to speak? Rebutts? All right, and I'd like to close this to public comment and open it to the group here. Uh, I want to remind us that, you know, the culvert, like, uh, Mrs. Terrapini said, is really not up to us at the planning and zoning. What it is, we need to decide if it is acceptable to do R100A or not. If, and as she pointed out, Mrs. Terrapini, that the city would have to address the drainage. Uh, I think it's a concern of all of us in Tarpon, who, I don't know about you guys, my house sits at six foot, so flooding is always an issue for me. But we're here strictly to say if this is something we want to go for R100A or leave it as it is. Um, so, any questions with anyone here? Any concerns?
I have a question for our planner. And you may or may not know the answer. Why did the city change it from its original plat in 1957 to a single lot, and why are we changing it back? Maybe just your best answer as to, to why that went on.
Uh, the city did not change the, um, lots. At some point, some owner, either the current owner or a previous owner, combined the three lots into one. You can do that if you want to.
I can answer some of that.
Oh, please, thank you.
Uh, I happen to have a house in the Fruit Bowl on three lots, and a corner lot. So when I first bought my house, it was on one lot, and then the lot next door to me came available, so I bought that. And then the next lot came available, so now I have a, and they're 50-foot wide lots, so I bought, now I have 150 feet. So my house now entails 100 foot, so two lots, but I'm probably going to rezone it to get one lot again, so I'm going to build a house on that lot that I have a 50-foot lot. So it's not the city that does that, it's the applicants here that try to plot the lots. So they're all plotted as long, long time ago, and so sometimes we change. 1958 was a long time ago.
Thank you.
Yeah, and just to kind of point with that and just to follow me, um, so if, uh, when Mrs. Protas purchased the properties back in 1985, I think it was, if at the time she decided to build three houses there based on the rules then with the non-conforming lots, we wouldn't even be having, obviously, any discussion today. Is that accurate? It's only because she chose at the time to not, uh, develop those three lots?
Yeah, I, and Mrs. Protas can, I'm sure, answer this. Um, I only saw one deed on the property record. It appeared to me that she bought the three already combined. Whether she did or not, if they were three separate lots, um, in 1985, to the best of my knowledge, the R100, R100A zoning district was in effect in some form. I don't, I'd have to look up and, because this code was adopted in 1990. I think the difference would go back to, I think, 1976. I'd have to research that. But assuming any of the lots that met the minimum requirements of the district could be built on if they were separate lots, they would have to be separated back. Um, or she could do two together and one separate, or, uh, anything like that. Good example, when an owner wants to build on two lots, and they put the house, one, they own two lots next to each other, and they want to put a house on the bill, we do require a unity, a title on the two lots. We don't allow them to stay as separate lots for pretty much obvious reasons. Um, we do that for residential development, so, um, I don't know that these were three separate lots when she purchased it. They may have been, but, um, she would.
Right.
Right. Yes, that's true. They've just been, they're.
Yeah, no, I'm just trying to get to the point that, that at the time, if they were developed, like, obviously, we wouldn't have the issue. So I, I think we're just giving fairness right now into what was expected at the time of purchase. So that's all, that, that was the point I was basically trying to get to. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for the city?
Chairman, I move approval of applicant number 1869 rezoning amendment for the Lucille Drive.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
Thank you, we'll take a vote, please.
Ms. McCumber?
Yes.
Mr. Vesey?
Yes.
Mr. Servopoulos?
Yes.
Mr. Frain?
Yes.
Mr. Koiner?
Yes.
Mr. Hasey?
Yes.
Thank you. Passed? Thank you. All right, on to staff comments.
Um, I would just note that, um, in your minutes, uh, we did have that, we would, that, uh, there could be a discussion item on the, um, noticing requirements that you wanted to talk about. Um, if you want to do any discussion on that this evening, I'm prepared to give you a little bit of information. If not, we can do it at a future time.
I'm not clear what.
Uh, you were talking about, you asked at the last meeting that, um, uh, that we have a discussion item on noticing, mailed noticing distance requirements, I believe was the.
Correct. I want to bring that up again. So what's the procedure to do that?
Um, basically, um, I can, I can give you a little bit of information on where we are with land development code, um, changes that I couldn't really talk about last time. Um, the, the staff is reviewing the entire land development code. Um, we do have an item in the, um, city's draft or requested budget for the 2019 fiscal year to, um, update, uh, portions of the land development code that need it. Um, this would be, um, something that could be on that list and could be reviewed, um, under that, uh, project. Um, so we would like to have the opportunity to, um, research the item under that, um, umbrella. One thing we would, um, like to request, and we can bring something back to you, is, is, um, maybe, um, specificity on if there is some particular thing, uh, items that you're concerned with, um, types of applications, uh, with respect to, if it was just the distance requirements and, and what exactly, um, you're concerned with and what you, um, would like to see. But we'd like to fold that under that land development code rewrite project, assuming it stays in the budget and is funded. If it doesn't, then we could still, um, proceed. This board, one of the duties of this board is to recommend changes to the code. As you know, all change, proposed changes to, to the code come before you, so that is one of your functions as a board.
All right, thank you. Uh, just a comment for me on that. I mean, it's something I've been pushing for, for a couple of years now. Example is, like, in the historic district, where, uh, just recently, yeah, a, a person in there built a two-story garage, and only, uh, 200 feet were, of people were notified. So it's one street away from me, but I'm beyond the 200 feet, so I wasn't notified. And there are several other people in the neighborhood that are really upset that, you know, what kind of protections do we have as a historic district? Just one example of it. And I've been on this board a few times when people in other neighborhoods have said, we didn't know that was happening. Why didn't, why weren't, why weren't we noticed? 200 feet is only, what, two, three, four houses on either side of you? And when you're talking about a historic district, I mean, there's a lot of protection there, and it just goes away. This, in this particular case, the, which is really interesting, the, uh, historic district agreed that they could build this two-story garage at 18.5 feet, and the city said, oh, no, you can do 20.5. So who is controlling this? And I think if more people were involved in a, a notification that, hey, this thing is going up in your neighborhood, and it doesn't really conform with our historic district, there would have been a lot more people say so. So I, I've really been pushing this, at least 500 feet. At one time, uh, someone said, well, let's just, anybody in a historic district should be notified. Well, I think that, that gets out of hand then, I don't think anything will go. But I think 500 feet would be more appropriate. At least there's a lot more people in that immediate area that's going to notice this property being built up, or whatever the changes are. So whatever we can do to get that going, I know a lot of people have already written to the commissioners and asked for a, uh, a voice on there to talk about this and what's going on in the neighborhood, so, um, I figure that at least 500 feet will at least help in that respect. So whatever we need to do to that, I would appreciate it.
Is that 500 feet are you just going out sideways from the?
It's five, it's, right now, it's, it's currently 200 feet. So that's 200 feet from this point, so 200 feet around.
But it does go in a circle.
I believe so, yes. Yes, 200 feet. So if you're 201, you didn't get a note. So, you know, I just think that it needs to be a little bit broader if you're talking about an entire neighborhood, just like we've been talking tonight about this piece of property here. I mean, it affects a lot of people, and, and if you think about it, only 200 feet, 200 feet around this piece of property, people were notified about it. So whatever we need to do with that, I, I would like to see that, uh, proceeded.
That's something, too. I think it would be important to, um, look at the owners, like this house that has three lots, you know, so you're, the 200 feet, you're only notifying one person because she owns the next three lots next door.
Right.
Um, or a rural area that's not necessarily developed. Is that true or not?
Yeah, actually, so it's 200 feet, and the, this is codified most of these for, by application type. HPB is in a separate section of the code for heritage preservation board items, and then the rest are back in the administrative items. And it's basically, you take the piece of land that the owner owns, no matter where they're doing their project on that land, you take that perimeter and go 200 feet from that. So it would have been her entire parcel, 200 feet circumference from the edge of that entire parcel.
I'm going to, if, you know, if the notice is supposed to be going out from here and the 200 feet, mine, you know, someone owns the next three over, then that notification doesn't go out further than one person. So it's not me.
That's correct.
But, yeah. The thing I'm saying is that matter if someone owns a large property around you, then you're only notifying the one person that owns around you within the 200.
By mail, yes.
So basically, one other person, one other resident got a notice.
By mail.
Which was Harry.
Yeah.
Just the way it was situating, the way you just explained it.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
Makes, makes a whole lot of sense.
Yeah, and this, this is not a new issue either, that's, you know, I mean, this has come before the city commission a few times of, of questions about this for years. Um, so I, I would fully support our board, whatever we can do to make some kind of action, not just for, necessarily for the historic district, but just in general, just kind of makes more sense to me.
Oh, this is happening, not just the historic district.
Right, exactly.
I mean, all over, I've seen it here.
Yep.
Many times.
One of the drawbacks, I see, not a drawback, but a stumbling block, perhaps, is somebody owns a large lot, and you're over here and you're, you've got a 500-foot lot. Not that, I don't know that we have any in Tarpon Springs, but the outskirts, if it's possible, we might have that kind of a scenario, and my question is 500 feet and up. But I also understand you get into game playing when you measure, you have to decide on something.
Well, it's, you know, 500, 600, 1,000, the whole district, I mean, you know, so I think just asking for 500 feet just involves a few more people in order to have a say-so of what's happening on in a, in a neighborhood or a commercial building. A commercial building could be put up, and you, you know? So, I mean, I think 500 feet, I think, is fair.
Quick question on that. Do we require public postings for all projects that come before PNC? I know, I know some properties will post if something is coming before board, but I, I don't think it's all. I, I don't know what requirements are.
Um, we did make note of all, for mailing, because that was the item that you were concerned over, but, um, the items that come before you, any type of map change, be it future land use map or rezoning is posted, conditional uses are posted, um, site plans are not advertised, so, um, so those are not posted. Um, annexations are posted. Uh, you don't do variances and appeals, um, which are posted. Um, certificates of approval are not posted, that's heritage preservation. Um, so it'd be basically map changes, conditional uses, annexations.
Got it. Thank you.
Which is probably most of, of what you see.
Any other comments to staff?
Mr. Chairman, it appears that there seems to be a consensus in your proposal and, and, what you'd like to do with that notice. And so if I were to acknowledge our, our counsel and, and planner, is, is there something that we can do tonight to move this ball one step forward as, as a board?
Excuse me, you don't, you don't need a motion if you have a consensus for 500 feet? If that's, was the consensus 500 feet just for historic district or for all? No, for all. Okay. Um, then what you can do is the, the planning and, or the department can notify the city manager, and then that's the chain of command up into the VOC. But you don't need a motion.
So even though we don't, perhaps that might make it a little bit more, uh, official, that, that flag in the ground. So if, even if it wasn't necessary, I'd make a motion that we follow the recommendations of our chairman, and that we recommend it from some point forward, that a notice of 500 feet is given for, um, proposed land use changes. The verbiage might not be perfect on that, but I think the concept is fair.
Eric, give me my opinion.
Right, I, I don't think it would be proper under the rules necessarily.
I don't think it's necessary, but I think that we need to bring it up every time we meet to see what, what's happened with that. And if it, if that, nothing happens, then we push a little harder from that point.
Yeah, and I thi, I think staff is, is, um, anytime we have a change to the code, obviously, we have to analyze that change for, um, you know, against, against, uh, planning standards, there's costs to applicants, things that I'm sure that you would want the full information to look at, um, before a final decision is made. And of course, you all will, um, make a recommendation to the board on any land development code. So staff would ask for, um, a little bit of leeway to have time to research, especially since you're asking for all of the mailed, let me clarify, mailed notices, uh, not the posting or legal ads. Correct? We're just talking about the distance for mailed notices. And the intent of that, I mean, I didn't really want to get into it, is really, um, we can research other jurisdictions as well. That's the part that lets the people really immediately around the property know what's happening because of the direct impacts. The advertisement and the posting is the thing that lets the general neighborhood know. And I get it that people don't have time to look at the board agenda every two weeks. I mean, I didn't do, you know, I don't do it as a citizen around my neighborhood. That's terrible.
And those, those notices are put in the paper, correct?
Yeah. And, of course, they're on the website, which is easy for people to check. Um, one nice thing is when you guys get your packet, that agenda is on the website, that, that, like, you know, half an hour later, they're very quick with that. Uh, that's one nice thing, at our last historic district, it was discussed, and that's, that's a, that's a small area, right, that's kind of manageable in comparison to the rest of the city. So if you live there, if I lived there, I would check the agenda the first Friday of the month to see what's on the, you know, um, on the website. I mean, that is a good way for the public to check and see what's. I mean, that is a good way for the public to check and see what's in my neighborhood in case they miss a postcard or a, a sign. Um, which in that case, they don't have the benefit of a sign. So. But, um, these are the kinds of things, maybe we could bring back a fuller information. If you could give us some, a little bit of time and see if we're going to be doing this land development code change. Um, we'd like to bring that back with, with the full, um, information on, on what they will, will do with respect to city operations, um, applicants and, and the public, benefit to the public. If we could have your indulgence for
I think we're okay with that. Just not going to forget.
We won't forget it. I brought it up, so I didn't forget it.
So, um, I guess that was staff comments still. So any board comments? We're moving on to that. Anyone on the board have a comment about anything?
I have a question. When you do your research with the other cities, do you think that you could see if anyone has any kind of electronic notification that they do? Just to kind of cut down on, well, postage or paper and mailing, if there is anything like, if I was a concerned homeowner and I wanted to sign up for the notifications or maybe, you know, have a distance around my home that I want to send notifications. I'm curious if anyone has developed that technology for that electronic.
We can certainly research that.
If anyone's got that. So it would be interesting. It would be worth the, worth it to do it.
Any other comments for the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move a German.
Well, if we have to.
We have to.
I hear a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. We're done. Thank you, folks.